Okay, Tammy, should I take it away?
Please do.
Okay, great. I'm not going to talk very long, but I did want to just come to your meeting tonight. First of all, thank you all for everything that you do for Reston. I know, I know you spend a lot of time, volunteer time, reviewing applications, providing the feedback, and it's, it's a real civic contribution. I very, very much appreciate everything you do, and I really do value your contributions to the community. So, thank you. So, I did want to talk a little bit tonight. I know some of you have worked on the latest update to the Reston Comprehensive Plan through that task force. Some of you also had been involved in the previous Reston Comprehensive Plan Task Force. And this is really the beginning of, I think, community involvement in the SSPA process for Reston. And frankly, I had not realized until recently that there really were not SSPA nominations that came in between, I'll call it the 2014 and 2015 Reston Plan and when I was sworn in in 2020. So, I guess what I had not realized, and I just wanted to talk with you about, is, is having P and Z provide input and feedback on nominations, SSPA nominations as they come in going forward. I think it makes a lot of sense for you all to do that. You know, the alternative, the most obvious alternative that I had thought about would be to form another task force to look at the SSPA nominations. Frankly, I'm not particularly excited about that, given the fact that you're there, you know, that you're already looking at rezoning applications, and you're already knee-deep in county land use policy. So, so I would very much appreciate it if, not exclusively, but if you all would be willing to review and provide feedback on these SSPA nominations as they come through the process. In addition to P and Z, we'll also be holding public meetings. You know, the nominators will typically be asked to also hold their own meetings. Some of these are relatively small. They may not have separate meetings, but some of them are pretty big. Many of those larger ones are also associated with rezoning applications. So, frankly, having you look at the plan language as part of SSPA and looking at rezoning, the rezoning application which is coming right behind, or sometimes being looked at at the same time, makes a lot of sense to me. So, anyway, hopefully that all makes sense, and happy to answer any questions or hear any complaints. But otherwise, also, DPD staff that oversees, I see Clara is on the phone, and Kelly, if there are any questions about the SSPA process and how it applies, or could apply in Reston.
I can only speak personally, Walter, but you know, as an individual serving on the Reston Planning and Zoning Committee, I am honored to be able to serve in that capacity and appreciate the trust that you have placed in us. So, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lynn.
Anyone else have a comment?
This is David.
Go ahead.
This is David. Just, Walter, I think it's a wonderful idea. And given how the SSPA system works, I would, I would like to make sure that we get appropriate feedback or appropriate commentary from staff about these applications as well, that, because there's, there's not a time crunch there as there is with a regular application. So, I would, I would encourage your staff, county staff, to make sure that they stay in close touch with us, and we have access to their thoughts and their commentary on each of these SSPA applications.
Yeah, great, great point, David. Clara, could I toss that to you as my camera goes on and off?
Sure, and hopefully you can hear me. Let me know if you have any trouble with the audio.
No, it's really good.
Okay, good. Well, I think, you know, when we do plan amendments, we often do just call a general public meeting. And so, I think a question I would have for the group is, tell us, tell us a little bit more about the timing. Are you interested in taking a vote? Are you thinking, and I'm thinking of, you know, we have many plan amendments on the work program, and so it would be good to hear from you. If you are interested in voting and making a recommendation, we would want to make sure to work that into, into future schedules. Is that, or is it the case that sometimes, you know, just, just coming to be briefed on it is enough? And it doesn't sound like that's what you're interested in.
Lynn? Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I think in the past, you know, I think that typically, at least from my understanding, is that, you know, we would vote on something before it goes to the Planning Commission. So, you know, to answer your question, Clara, at least from my perspective, I think that it would be great if Reston Planning and Zoning would have a vote on these SSPAs as they move forward.
And then I think-
Is that your expectation? I mean, would, would that be your preference?
I'd like that. I'll just jump in.
Yeah.
I would find that helpful.
And I think it just adds to the body of recommendations and comments that, you know, we get to hear that the Planning Commission and the board gets to, gets to receive and consider. I will say, some of these will occur a little bit differently. The Roland Clark is, is just a plan amendment. It doesn't have a zoning application and that level of detail. And so, I think just recognizing that some of these come with that finer detail, with the zoning application associated with it, and some don't. So, I think there's different level of, of detail that we have available, and the analysis that goes with it sometimes is more conceptual, like, like tonight, as opposed to when it's paired with, with that detail. Although Amanda will, I'm sure, answer as many questions as she can about the proposal.
Oh, Michelle, go ahead.
Well, I guess I would have a question on timing, because typically when applications come to us, they're first presented, we can provide feedback, and then they come back again with changes that have been made, and then they ask for a vote. So, you know, to me, that would, that would make the most sense, is that you wouldn't ask for a vote on something the same day you presented it, because then that removes the, the, you know, the function of this committee, which should be to, to hopefully create a better plan, right? It's not just a rubber stamp. So, so for me, from my perspective, I just wouldn't want to see that, that we only, you only come and say, this is what we're going to do. Do you like it or not? Right? So, it'd be a two, a two-meeting situation, I think.
Yeah. I'll just hear from more people before, yeah.
I'll go ahead, Clara.
I think we have a multiple, we're going to have SSPAs that are much different from one another. And Walter, if you're, if I'm reading your request properly, it's, you would like the 18-member Reston Planning and Zoning Committee to look at the plan. And then, as David Vannell thought, you know, so you would send it to us, I guess, paper or whatever you get, so that we have it. As been, as David Vannell pointed out, then we need input from the staff, because obviously the staff is looking at all of these things in, in how they fit together with the county system. And then, so, and then to Michelle's point, we aren't going to vote on something the first time we hear it. You know, we have questions, like this particular Roland Clark place has a lot of baggage coming with it. So, that's, you know, so I think we can't say we're going to do A or B. It's got to depend on what the actual SSPA is. The other point I would like to make is, we would, I would hope we would vote on whatever process we agree on as a committee as a whole in our regular October meeting, when most of our members can be here, and, you know, they're aware. We have a couple people who are not able to be here today, at least three, so, including our chair. So, I'm sure he would like to have a voice. Bill Panaman.
Yeah, I mean, Walter, since you, you asked, and of course, we're honored, but it comes with work, and we're glad to do it. And then there's this question is, I assume we'll process it more or less the same way we have before. I agree with David, and Michelle, it would be very helpful to get input from the staff. And, but, we're only a minor, or minority, or a tied quorum. And so, we'll talk about it, but I know we will do what you want and come up with the best way of providing useful input.
That would be great. I really appreciate it. I mean, this is, and I think some of this is going to be a little bit of back and forth iterative, I think, in terms of the process. Because Clara, I'm not sure, well, I know, I know the, the schedule has been a little bit fluid, and I think is now sort of coming into focus in terms of when the Planning Commission public hearing, when the, when the board public hearing will be for these different, but there's several that are coming in the next few months, I would say. So, Clara, whatever you could do to share, I guess we need to make sure that this, this committee has the information on schedule and, you know, what's basically coming up, and then work on giving them an opportunity to hear about it and get any feedback from staff, as well as hear from the nominator, frankly, and be able to answer and ask questions.
And I think, I just wanted to, with the timing, we have hearing dates already scheduled, and, and so we'll have to talk about how, you know, how many times we're able to return on this. Do we need, something need to change? We didn't come, this, we don't have a published staff recommendation. Often with a plan amendment, we want, want to hear from people. We're gathering comments before we finalize a recommendation. And so, I can share conclusions that we've reached on certain topics, certainly, at this, at this stage. But there isn't plan text or a recommendation that's published. And so, it might be that we have to look at the calendar, see if we can return once that staff report's published, something like that, after we, after, yeah.
And Clara, let me just jump in. I think it would also be really helpful, even if the staff report's not published, just to have somebody from staff on the call and, and be able to talk to anything that's, you know, any questions that are, that are brought up, and, and, you know, share information, or frankly, any, any big insights that staff might have, even if it's not in writing. And again, apologize for my camera. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, going in order, the first, the next person with their hand up is either David or Sue. I'm not sure which.
David, just a, just a procedural question. Are we going to get the material about these SSPA applications, nominations? Are we getting them directly from county? Or are we going to get them through the nominee?
Good question. Clara, can you help? How about other land use committees that are doing this? Do they typically get them off the county website, or how's that work?
Um, well, often we would just, often we just arrive with the presentation. And every land use committee is different. And so, I think that's generally been my experience, but it's not, it's not always the case. Some, some have more of a structure where it's, they want to see material, they want to see items twice. I'm thinking of, I think Franconia maybe is one of those land use committees. And Kelly, I know you're on the call. Do you have some examples of?
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Kelly Atkinson, Planning Division. Sully has been, the Sully, the joints, the Sully Committee, they, they have been the same sort of way, where staff has come twice to have a presentation, one for information only, kind of early in the process, like Clara had mentioned. And then, once, once the staff report has been published, coming back with staff's recommendation. That's usually when the Sully Council has voted. But we've usually, we've worked really closely, like with the, with this, you know, like with Mark, you know, we could share information through Mark, and he can, you know, we've worked closely with the land use aids to kind of, through the supervisor's office, to help them disseminate information as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, next was Jeremy. Jeremy Mack?
Yeah, I just was going to say that I think it'd be helpful if, if you're looking for feedback from us, maybe some specific guidelines on, or, you know, just comments about what type of feedback you're looking for. You know, whether it's just, hey, guys, what are your thoughts? Or if there are specific issues that you are curious to hear our opinions on, or, you know, kind of what the scope of our review ought to be. I think that could be helpful, too.
Thank you. Bill Panaman.
Yeah, I mean, I assume that the basic filing and the SSPA filings, those are public documents. Any amendments that come in will be public documents. And that's the sort of thing, whether it comes from you or from the applicant, isn't important so much as our having the opportunity to talk to the applicant, and to the extent possible, getting your thoughts, even if they're preliminary thoughts about it. I mean, like, if we find out it's going to die next week, then we don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But, but you, but as somebody said, you know, just your thoughts, questions you think are important that we should, you would like our feedback on specifically, apart from a thumbs up and down, whatever. And even, it'll be an iterative process, but I'm sure it'll be constructive.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, it sounds like what Sully is doing is more in line with what we would like. And so, that would be where you come and present, and it would be the county staff presenting with what you have, and then come back when you have the staff report. So, if we could get there, I think we would be in a better position and more effective. And then, we have, we receive, you know, all of the materials ahead of time. I don't think I would want to be in a position to have to vote on something when I haven't seen the presentation sent to us beforehand. You know, there's a lot of folks on this committee who spend a lot of time going through everything so that they can provide as educated, you know, thoughts as possible. So, if you guys could send it to us ahead of time, that would be appreciated.
And if, if I could jump in here, Michelle, I want to be very sensitive. The staff is swamped, and I'm not sure they can come back to us twice. But getting their conclusions and getting to talk to them once would be fabulous. We're certainly not going to vote the first day we see something. I think that's understood. And Mark, I think, can liaise in getting us the original stuff, and certainly the applicant would, you know, be, have the impetus to come and tell us what's going on. Does that make sense, Walter?
Yeah, I think it does, Tammy. Bill's got his, got both hands up.
I just want to emphasize.
Bill, we lost your audio.
That we lose Bill.
Yeah.
I lose video and Bill loses audio.
Oh, dear.
This is Clara, again, from planning. May I ask, because I'm hearing a few things. It sounds as if that initial bringing of information comes in a few forms. It might be that it's the developer coming to present early and staff is available. Maybe not necessarily a presentation, or in some cases, we have multiple developers involved in studying an area. And so that we would coordinate through Mark and make sure we, that that works with your agenda. And that, really, that second meeting is post-publishing or sharing a staff recommendation, and then that, we get to hear, have a discussion about that. Okay. And, and I acknowledge, sometimes it's staff who would come and do that initial presentation. But that, that would be a rare exception, I think.
I don't think-
Yeah, I think, yeah, Tammy, sorry.
It's just-
I was just going to say, that's the way that it's worked.
Okay, yeah, I don't think we have a hard and fast rule. I just want to be sensitive to the fact that the staff has so many hunter mill-only things that to have you come back required twice is not reasonable as far as your workload. But, and we want to be sensitive to that. At the same time, we do want the information that you might have that would be very helpful to us. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, Tammy, if I could just follow up on that. I think Mark also can be a resource ongoing to fill in some of the blanks. I know he's talking, and Michelle may have some other thoughts, too.
Michelle?
Well, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm just going to say, though, I want to be respectful of our time as well. And so, what I don't want to have occur is that we have a meeting where we discuss this plan and staff is not present, and everything we discuss goes nowhere. So, if we're going to have a meeting, do you know, to, to have, to have input on what is the final product before we vote on it, I just want to make sure it's not just us talking to ourselves or talking to an applicant who may or may not share what we said. So, I mean, I don't mean to, you know, I want to be respectful of everybody's time here.
Good point. Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm actually going to tack onto what Michelle was saying, in that I think that when we, as a committee, do a vote, oftentimes that vote isn't a very clear, doesn't clearly convey the discussion of the committee. And sometimes, even just how it'll get worded, like, we, we might say, you know, we approve this with the caveat that we're concerned about whatever. And when we do the vote, some of us don't know if we're voting that we like it even without the caveat, or that we only like it with the caveat, or we're voting that we don't like the caveat. And so, I think having somebody from the staff present to actually hear the conversation, it accomplishes the goal of getting feedback more so than the vote itself does.
Good point. Bill Panaman, are you back with a voice?
Yes, my computer decided, well, it wanted to interfere. Anyway, I just want to make the point, we're not here to review staff. I mean, that's not what, what we're doing. We're being asked to review the, the SSPA proposal and give input on that. And we would benefit from the staff input. We would greatly benefit of your thinking along the way. But ultimately, we need to talk to the applicant and act based on what's put in front of us. And I don't want to put, as Tammy said, we know the staff is very busy. They're very accommodating, but there are limits to how much we should, we should impose on them just to help us. And that's all. We'll talk this out at our next October meeting, and even-
Lynn?
Yeah, I just want to build on what Bill said. So, you know, I think that this committee brings a Reston-specific lens to what's, you know, before staff. So, you know, I think that, you know, that we do bring a lot of value to the evaluation that staff is making on these SSPAs. And we do have a lot more focus on, you know, Reston-specific things that staff may not have. So, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to be able to bring that intelligence to the evaluation that staff is performing.
Okay, and Michelle, did you have a last point?
I did. I had, it's more of a question, just for clarification. So, it's my understanding that the applicant proposes the SSPA, but it is actually staff that is writing the SSPA, not the applicant. They might do it in coordination with the applicant, but what the product we will see will be a staff product, is, and what would ultimately move forward.
Is that accurate?
That's a, that's a great question. So, every, just, just to answer the question, I'll answer the question this way, see if I can get at it. We do receive nominations from developers. They sometimes get modified along the way by the board that maybe describes the scope of what we should evaluate. But what moves forward with a plan amendment comes information about the nomination and a staff recommendation. And so, it's all coming to the Planning Commission. Information about that original proposal, what the staff recommends, all of the comment that, yeah, does that answer it?
Can I say one thing, Clara?
So, oh, go ahead, sorry, yeah.
I was just going to say, I think what you're asking, Michelle, and you can correct me, is like, what's actually voted on at this, like, at this stage with the SSPA, particularly in this instance, which we'll get into, because we don't have a concurrent rezoning, is the staff-written text that will go in the comp plan, which is not a, you know, an applicant or nominating, nominator-written product. It's a staff-written product that is informed with back and forth about potential, about what may move forward at the next stage, which would be a zoning application. So, hopefully that's helpful.
That's what, that was my understanding. And so, I think that's why this is a slightly different process than some other things. And so, you know, again, I think we can be respectful and understanding of everyone's time, but also recognize the end product will be written by staff, influenced by what they've learned along the way, what was presented. And so, I think it would be beneficial to have staff at both meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Walter, do you have any final thoughts on this?
Just a huge thank you.
Well, thank you, and thanks, thank you to the staff for helping us through this with your idea of previewing.
Yeah, and I, and Tammy, you know, whatever my office can do to help you all in terms of this process, just, you know, let us know.
Thank you, Walter. All righty, I, I'm, want to be sure I'm, you know, not screwing up the works here. Amanda, are you ready to, or is the staff ready to present whatever they want to present about Roland Clark?
Yes, I believe the plan, and Clara and Heather can correct me if I'm wrong. It was for staff to give a, a presentation to your guys' point about having staff's, staff's thoughts and inputs on the SSPA. And Heather or Clara will give a presentation, then I will give a brief presentation from the nominator's perspective, and then we can take questions.
Perfect.
And let me introduce, oh, sorry, Tammy. I just want to introduce Heather Springs from Planning Division. I think we had prepared, it's about, gosh, I don't know, nine, 10 minutes. I don't, I don't see, I can't tell, are there, if there are any members of the public that aren't familiar with the comprehensive plan on the call? Perhaps you can tell me?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, it could be Heather, I know this is a last-on-the-spot adjustment, but I think you can really just gloss through a lot of that. You know, what is the plan? How is it different than zoning? And we can get to some of the staff considerations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Okay, guys, um, again, I'm Heather. I'm a planner with the Department of Planning. I'm going to kind of jump around my presentation a little bit, because it seems like most of you know what this is. But I just wanted to give a brief overview into our comprehensive plan. It's made up of our policy plan, our four area volumes, and then our plan map. There's, the, the policy plan and the area plans include general guidance for countywide policy for topics like land use, transportation, and housing. The policy plan really contains that overall language that applies to all of the county. And then your, our area plans have more specific guidance for each land area and, and sub-districts all throughout each district or each plan. This is our concept for future development map. I'm sure you guys are very familiar. There are three transit station areas within Reston. 1950 Roland Clark falls within the Wheelie-Reston East Transit Station area. So, you'll hear me say that again, so I just want to make sure I say the language in case I say the abbreviation TSA. So, this is our, our plan amendment process versus our zoning process. And, and this is- So this is our, our plan amendment process versus our zoning process. And this is the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about tonight. So the comprehensive plan amendment process is going to be that first stage of reviewing development proposals. So generally, the rezoning process will follow an approval of a plan amendment. And this is an important distinction because the scope of what we consider in a plan amendment process is different from what is considered through the zoning process. So the plan amendment process analyzes the potential impacts for a proposed use and at certain intensities or densities, as well as identifies some key considerations. These recommendations are presented as policy options in the comprehensive plan and are subsequently referenced and reviewed during a zoning process. The zoning process would include a final development plan. And that would go into finer details such as parking and building heights and parking spaces and things like that. So it's just kind of important to note that, that what we look at in the plan amendment process is is a little bit larger scale, a little bit different from, from the details that you guys have been accustomed to seeing through reviewing those zoning cases. So the process for a plan amendment, once the board adopts it and adds it to our work program. Staff, when we initiate a study, will go through impact analysis, will reach out to different agencies, get their feedback on, on what potential impacts may be. And then through that process, we'll have some community meetings. And then we'll start working on a staff recommendation. Once the staff recommendation is finalized, it'll move to public hearings. And then the final stages of a successful plan amendment would be those public hearings before Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. And then the Board of Supervisors can take a vote on whether to adopt the plan amendment. Alright, so I'm gonna slow down a little bit, get more into the details on Roland Clark. So 1950 Roland Clark Place, it's generally located north of Sunrise Valley Drive. It's south of the toll road, and it's at the northwest end of Roland Clark Place. It's currently developed with a 90,000 square foot multi-tenant office building. And the site is located within the Wheelie Transit Station area. The adjoining parcel to the east was redeveloped as a multifamily use, which we call Point at Reston. The parcels to the south and southeast are redeveloped townhomes. And then the Reston Heights Development to the west includes condo building, hotels, and office building, and a newer multifamily building. The area on this figure is the Wheelie Transit Station TOD area. The subject property on Roland Clark is shown with the yellow star. 1950 Roland Clark Place is currently planned for residential mixed use at an intensity of up to 3.55 FAR. Residential mixed uses is defined in the Reston Plan as a mix of existing office uses with residential and commercial uses. Before I go into more about how this area is planned, I wanted to give some plan history because it's unique to how this area came to be. In the 1980s, this area was developed as an office park. Then in 2008, a site plan was approved for this parcel. This subject property and the neighboring parcel, which is now the Point at Reston. The site plan permitted three new office buildings at an intensity of 3.55 FAR. This site plan was never implemented, but the approved intensity carried over into the updated versions of the Reston Comprehensive Plan Text adopted in 2015. Then the most recent update to the Reston Plan adopted by the board in September of 2023 restructured the transit station areas and created the Roland Clark Place Sub District. And the current Comprehensive Plan Guidance recommends redevelopment provisions for interparcial access to the west and a public recreation component for the site. Comprehensive Plan Guidance for this transit station area includes two designations with ratio guidance for development. The residential mixed use designation calls for 75% residential, 25% non-residential. And these areas are generally beyond a quarter mile, but within a half mile of the metro station. And then transit station mixed use is a 50/50 split, and those are the areas closest to the metro stations. The proposed plan amendment considers 100% residential use on the site. So as part of the analysis, staff reviewed the land use guidance and the existing development ratios. When considering the existing ratios, we analyze both existing development and development that has a zoning approval, but that has not yet been built. We found that in the residential mixed use areas south of the toll road, it's currently a 61% non-residential and 39% residential split. If this proposed plan amendment was adopted and implemented, the new ratios for the Wheelie Residential Mixed Use Area south of the Dulles Toll Road is estimated to be 52% residential and 48% non-residential. We also consulted with county agencies, public service, and infrastructure providers to determine what the impacts would be of the proposed development. These considerations included the mix of land uses, broader county housing goals, and potential impacts with additional residential uses. We've talked about the mix of, mix of the land uses in this area. In consideration of impacts to the transportation network, Fairfax County Department of Transportation noted expectations for bike and pedestrian connectivity through the site improvements, as well as the inclusion of the shared use path and the west connection to the Reston Heights Development. Potential roadway and transportation improvements would be determined during the rezoning and built alongside development. Schools analysis indicated sufficient capacity for the proposed plan amendment intensity. When coordinating with County Parks Authority staff, they indicated that new development would meet the county's urban parks framework, which recommends one and a half acres of dedicated park space per 1,000 residents for new residential developments in transit station areas. The proposed plan amendment would warrant approximately 0.8 acres of urban park space, given the number of units. An environmental review of the proposed plan amendment indicates this site will need to address residential noise in proximity to the toll road, as well as stormwater management improvements through a future zoning review. And then finally, the county's land use goals and housing objectives promote new housing opportunities, particularly those with access to affordability, commitments to recreation and healthy communities, and environmental sustainability. New housing at this location would meet these objectives with its proximity to metro and the included open park space. All new housing developments must meet the county's ADU and WDU policies to provide affordable housing opportunities. At the September 8th community meeting, we heard a number of comments and concerns from the neighbors in this area. A primary concern for this community is the traffic consideration, including number of trips, speed of travelers, queuing along Roland Clark at the Sunrise Valley Drive access, and sightlines for vehicles around corners. We also heard that parking from the multifamily development appears to overflow into the free street parking along Roland Clark Place, which limits parking to those townhome residents. The community also expressed concerns for pedestrian safety and concerns that more traffic and cars will compound that issue. We also heard additional comments regarding the number of units and future residents as a result of this development and possible construction noise and safety considerations. We're now at the stage of developing, developing our staff recommendation to amend the comprehensive plan guidance. A staff report, including the final staff recommendation, is expected to be published in October, no later than October 8th. Public hearings are scheduled for October 29th, Planning Commission, and Board of Supervisors on December 9th.
Awesome. Is that?
Yep.
All for you, Heather? Awesome. I have a few slides as well to go through to give you guys an overview from the nominator's perspective. Give me a moment.
Amanda, can I please interrupt you and ask for a clarification from Heather before?
Of course.
Hear from you. Heather, did I hear correctly that there was a Roland Clark Sub District with the, with 100% residential approved?
Um, not quite. So the Roland Clark Sub District currently has guidance for a 75% residential, 25% non-residential split. If that guidance were to be applied on a parcel-by-parcel basis, this development, the 1950 Roland Clark Place Plan Amendment is seeking 100% residential uses on site. So, all that, all that to say is they're not including a non-residential component to this proposal. We are assessing the, the ratio guidance to the TSA area as a whole and not just to the parcel or the sub-district. And so we go into a little bit more detail on that in, in the staff report that'll eventually be published. But, but I hope that's clear.
Thank you. I, I worked on the land use chapter, and I know we had nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was 100%. So I was, what is that? So Lynn, did you have a brief comment before Amanda continues?
Yeah, and I can hold my comment until after Amanda finishes with her presentation. You know, but I do want to say that, you know, this is not what we had discussed as ideal use for this site in this parcel during the comprehensive plan consideration. So I'll save my comments for after Amanda. Thank you.
Amanda, you're, you're floor. Thank you, Heather, for the clarification.
Awesome. Thank you. Can you guys see my screen here?
Yes.
Great. So obviously, I'm Amanda Williams with Cooley. Happy to be here to discuss with you guys the 1950 Roland Clark Place SSP nomination. I'm here on behalf of the property owners who are investment partners. So Heather obviously did a great job giving a overview there. And as you heard, we filed this plan amendment proposal back in 2022 after working for, after having worked for many years on redevelopment options for this site. And what we're proposing is the current residential mixed use designation to modify that, which is currently at a 3.55 FAR, to permit redevelopment of the property with residential uses, yes. And meaningful public recreation space at a reduced 2.5 FAR. And what we specifically envision is a redevelopment offering a high-quality multifamily building with meaningful outdoor public creation, recreation space to complete the neighborhood in this area. And for just a little bit more context on some of the comp plan background, prior to the 2015 version of the comp plan, this site was planned for the 100% commercial. The Reston Center for Industry and Government Covenants prevented residential along the toll road until 2011, when those were vacated. Then the 2015 Comprehensive Plan sought to correct, correct this lack of residential and frankly lessen the traffic impact of the, of the commercial. And recommended a 50% residential minimum for this site at the 3.55 FAR, and then a 75% residential and 25% non-residential for the overall residential mixed use area. But the reality was, at that point in time, the 75/25 was being applied on an individual basis and not on the overall basis. And so for sites like 1950, the current conditions do not justify that use mix or the intensity, frankly, which has brought us to the need to file this SSP in 2022 and brings us to 2025. So this slide shows you a summary of the challenges for this site. First here, the existing building is functionally obsolete. The growing vacancy has worsened since the SSP was filed in 2022. We are at about 40/50% vacancy of the space in the building at this point. And that obviously has a diminishing value to the building, which is, of course, not good for the property owner, but also not good for the county from a tax revenue perspective, or for the adjacent homeowners or users, particularly as time goes on and we are trending in the direction of the building ending up completely, completely vacant. As you are all well aware, demand has shifted away from the suburban office park or what this area used to be as a suburban office park, now just a singular office building and towards, and towards the amenitized, walkable new spaces adjacent to the metro. Size is a concern for this site specifically. It is at the end of a road without any passing car or foot traffic. And this site is also now completely surrounded by residential development with a fairly recent redevelopment of the three immediately adjacent sites that has really changed the fabric of this area, making it hard to pull people behind those residential developments to any commercial uses that would frankly also bring unwanted levels of traffic through those neighborhoods. So this image kind of helps to illustrate again the surrounding, the area surrounding the site that has really, really shifted. The site here, again in yellow there at the end of Roland Clark Place, you can see the Valley and Park Townhomes and the Sunrise Square Townhomes just to the south, the Point at Reston directly to the east, and the Mercer Condominiums to the west. And just at a quick glance here, this image really illustrates that they not have great open space or recreational opportunities in this immediate area. And so we really do view this as a great opportunity to modify the Comprehensive Plan recommendations to redevelop an aging office building, of course, and also to permit better utilization of the property for the community. So, again, quickly reminder, we are at the planning stage, not the zoning stage. So I think what we're really at a baseline asking at this point is whether, whether putting multifamily and meaningful public recreation space here is a good idea. Nevertheless, we have been sharing concepts, illustrative concepts with staff along the way about what this could look like if we file a zoning application in the future. And this shows that current concept in the context of the neighborhood. And at first glance here, you can see we are providing needed open space and amenities to this neighborhood with the current concept. We would also have the opportunity to provide needed connectivity. The purple-ish line to the south there shows pedestrian and bike connectivity. And the blue lines are showing the intent to provide an additional vehicular connection to the west. This is a zoomed-in version of the plan, different colors representing the different uses throughout the proposal. The shades of orange represent the residential multifamily portions of the building. The green, obviously representing the open space. It says open space here, but the intent would be meaningfully programmed recreation space. We are just at a high level here with the plan amendment, so we don't know exactly what would go in there. But the intent is for it to be meaningfully programmed. Along Payson's Way there, the plan is also to include a pedestrian trail that will connect to the west and integrate well with the townhouses to the south and our new open space here. There is a connection there today, but this would be a really enhanced condition from what is already out there. The blue line, again, showing that access road that would allow vehicular connectivity to the west. The gray is obviously the parking garage appropriately located against the toll road, which does match the design of the adjacent apartment building. And this generally matches the scale of that adjacent building, but was designed to be more friendly and responsive to the adjacent townhomes. And I'll show you some massing here in a second. This layout, if you've been in any of the other meetings on this plan amendment along the way, has evolved in the past three years in conversations with staff. And the focus for the county and for staff has really been on the urban parks and the recreation space. So the design is now reflective of that and prioritizing that. Here is the conceptual massing for that current concept. As you can see, the building is really set back from that townhouse development to allow for the trail, the linear park, the larger open space area. And that first arm of the building is really pulled back even further to allow for those meaningful amenities right off of Roland Clark Place. And we think this really provides this entire area with a much more pedestrian community feel. And this is just showing various potential amenities in the space. Again, we're at the planning stage and we would have lots of conversations with you guys, with parks, with the adjacent communities to, to determine what, what kind of programming would be the best in this location. And lastly here, I just wanted to highlight some of the specific community benefits that could come along with this change. We, again, do think this is a good opportunity to modify the plan and to be more consistent with its residential surroundings and provide benefits to the surrounding area. Adding meaningful public recreation space is at the top of that list in terms of benefits to the community of making this change. But they also include the connectivity, both pedestrian and vehicular. This also represents a significant reduction in traffic from what is currently in the Comprehensive Plan. And this amendment also memorializes a lower density, more neighborhood appropriate development for this site. And that sums it up for me. And we're happy, of course, to answer any questions that you have in coordination with staff.
Thank you, uh, Amanda. Um, I'm trying to catch my breath here. I want to make a real brief summary. For the people who are new onto the committee. Uh, the Point Building, which is the big white multifamily building. Which is studios, one and two bedroom. Was built as phase one of a two-phase project. What Amanda is presenting is phase two. Phase one was a hundred percent residential. Phase two needs to be fifty-fifty to make up for the fifty percent already residential. To get us anywhere near seventy-five, twenty-five. Um, the idea that we're doing, looking over an area and going, oh. Well, we're balancing out commercial versus residential. If you look at the nearby thing and the, and Heather's report on the community comments. On the September fifth meeting. There are already, without any more residences back on nineteen fifty Roland Clark. People overparking and constricting enjoyment of the townhouse. Uh, projects that are to the south of the, this Roland Clark double phase. I'm just, um, the mass of apartments is not petite. It's huge. So I can't even imagine. Putting more and more people in there with such a tiny. Tiny open space. Purported to be recreational for that whole area. All, when um, phase one went in, it only went in. Because Abachi Court was built on the edge of nineteen fifty. And I mean on the edge, the edge of the court is on, is borders the properties to the south. The more contemporary uh, townhouses. Um, and then a lot of that property was supposed to be more recreational and open space. Um, this is humongous in my view, and I'm going to shut up now. Lynn, you had your hand up next.
Thank you Tammy. As the committee knows, I'm really quick to push my raise hand button. I usually go first, but um, yeah, I just want to remind the committee um, that, you know, we did Tammy. Uh, and myself and Bill Penniman, we were all on the uh, this task force. Um, Tammy served on the land use committee, the working group that went into the uh. Input into the comprehensive plan. And we specifically spent weeks talking about this parcel. And. The, the building itself. Um, I physically went over and looked at the building and, you know, people talk about this being end of life. Uh, I'm sorry, um, the, the building itself is not end of life, but. Uh, if that's the case, then, you know, one of the things that we specifically talked about. Was the need for commercial uh, medical space. With all of the people that are moving into this area, there is a reduction. In office space for medical professionals. And I think Michelle Kimmel was involved in this discussion as well. That we need to have um, office space. To be able to support businesses that would be going into these uh, neighborhoods. To support the, the mass amount of residences that are coming in. Um, this is not something that, that we had considered. Um, and, you know, I, I just think that it is, uh, it's, it's shocking. Um, to me, to see after all of the work that we did and all of the consideration that we gave to this site. Uh, to see this SSPA uh, coming before us. But um, that's just my opinion and I'm gonna be quiet and let others speak. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm not sure who was next, so we'll start at the top.
Jeremy is next and then Katie.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah, so um, I saw the three point five five FAR uh, brought up a number of times as what is. I mean, simplify this as saying uh, by right. It's, I guess maybe the better way to say is this is what the current plan is for the uh. Uh, three point five five FAR. Uh, but I, I don't remember seeing what the proposed FAR is for the residential apartment area.
I think that's still in discussions in terms of what staff's final recommendation of the FAR. What we've looked at and talked, talked about is um, between, is up to a two point five, between a two point two and a two point five. Somewhere in that range, but Claire and Heather can.
Okay. If that ends up being the case, then basically you'll be building. Not more residential than had originally been conceived. You're just not building out the commercial.
That's, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me if we're talking about square footage, but roughly.
Okay.
Heather may have done that math. Heather, you, I think you had done some of that math. You may not have it with you. I think it does end up being less residential.
Yeah, like I think it's probably still less.
It, it comes out to less, but I don't have the numbers in front of me to remember how much.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, it's really um, the heart of my question. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Katie?
Hey, good evening. Hey, I just had a quick question. Um, on one of those lines you were showing like a road along the back. That you said would cannot connect people to the west. That the western is, the hotel is to the west. So where are we? Where are you connecting people to? Like to the road that runs behind the western, I guess? Is that what you're doing?
Potentially. So again, we're at like an early stage, so we would study this in more detail. I can, I'm trying to pull the plan back up for you.
I was just gonna, right, because like you were, like, the whole thing was connecting people to the west. So are you, are you connecting them behind the western? Is that what you're doing? You're just pushing them over to the hotel?
So, yeah, there's no, right, there's obviously, we're not looking at, you know, a, a, a major roadway that's right here to the west. The idea would be to have an alternate um, and a second uh, vehicular connection to the west here. There are already some existing easements out here to make this connection. It's just never been made. Um, we would have to expand upon some of, some of those. And this has been in discussion with staff. So we would connect um, to, we could connect to this, this um, roadway here. And folks would have another alternative to get out. There's also the possibility that we've talked with staff about. And this would require more analysis at the zoning stage that we do, that we are able to kind of make this connection and get folks out. If you can follow my cursor around the back here to this, to this signal as well.
Okay, so that's a, so here's what I was gonna say. I don't see the cursor, but if you go along the back, kind of behind the hotel. You know, you can kind of weave your way out to the stoplight there in front of the eleven eight hundred tall building. That's, that's what I was wondering. Is that what you guys are gonna try to do? Push people out so they can get out of the stoplight?
Potentially. I mean, in discussions, when we did, when they did the rezoning here for nineteen forty-one, that there was always talk. And there's already a proffer about this western connection. And the intention was kind of always that folks would connect to this immediately adjacent road and be able to get out to a right, this is a right in, right out here. Um, but the, it remains a possibility when we.
Okay, so you're saying they would just go on to that, to the, I'll just call it the service road, whatever it is, the road that runs. Um, north, south, not east, west, behind, or, yeah, they would not run behind the western, you're saying?
Yes, or there's the potential for both, is what I'm saying, but.
Okay. I guess I'm saying just something to think about. You probably want to run behind the western. Because then folks can get to a stoplight to get out, is what I'm saying.
And we've been talking about that um, with, with staff as we've been talking with the community. So yes, that is um, that is something we are looking into.
Okay, cool. That was all. That was just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm not sure who is next. I don't have any numbers on my screen. I see uh, Bill Penniman. Matt, Matt?
Bill's next.
Okay.
Am I next or is Bill next?
Matt.
Okay, I'll, I'll go. It'll, it'll be relatively quick. Um, first question is, do you have an estimate of how many new units this proposal would have?
So it would depend on, you know, various factors. And as we're talking about the FAR and the ultimate square footage, but somewhere in the range of three twenty to three fifty.
Okay.
Which is comparable to the adjacent apartment building.
And that would be parked at one point seven five spaces a unit or somewhere around that? So five fifty parking spaces, something like that?
I don't have the exact number of spaces. Um. I think it's less than that. Heather, I don't know if you have that number, but.
I, I don't.
We can get that to you, of course, like with the.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I know it's pretty early and you're moving stuff around. Um, I think just a general comment. Um, I, I'm gonna disagree with a few other people on the, on the board here. Based on the other developments around the area, I think the character of this neighborhood has taken on a more residential character. I think we've got some larger density, more retail-focused and commercial-focused developments. Close to, closer to the metro stations. So this is certainly still walkable to the metro station, but. You know, to me, it, it, you know, we're experiencing a housing shortage. We need more housing. And this logically seems like a, a pretty good place to put it as far as being compatible with the existing surrounding buildings there. So that's just my, my two cents regarding that. Um, is there any? I, I guess my question is, what's the walking experience from this development to the Wheelie Reston Station? If people were to want to leave their cars at home and get to the metro to get into work. Would they be, is there a trail that kind of goes along the backside of the property there? Or would it just be out on the street on the sidewalk?
Um, oh, go ahead Heather.
Okay, um, there is not currently a trail for portions of it that connect along the toll road. That is part of the county's trail plan, um, part of our comprehensive trail plan. Um, but it's not there yet. That being the case, you can follow sidewalks along Sunrise Valley to get to the metro station. Um, I don't know exactly how far that is off the top of my head. I, I have looked it up once before.
I, I think that's an important thing to understand. Um, just how realistic, any sort of traffic study. Any reduction in traffic would, would actually be, I guess, is my, my question. I mean, the numbers and the math could say something, and then the reality could be something different. Because it's just not a pleasant or convenient experience for, you know, these five hundred people as well as the other. You know, hundreds of residents that live in this area to actually walk to metro rather than get in their cars and drive.
Right. Absolutely. And that, that is part of transportation's analysis. Um, and that would be more detail that would come out in, in a zoning case review. Um, would be, you know, exactly how comfortable those walks are. Um, and it was, you know, part in reference to the plan amendment. And it, and would be included in our staff report of, of what they found at this stage. Um, but more detail would, would definitely come at the zoning stage.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
One additional point on that thought, um, which is a good one, and we'll look into it, is that it, in developments like this, we find that. It, if it's your home, if it's your residence, you are much more likely to walk a little further. And, or, you know, not maybe the, the most ideal scenario versus track, coming from the metro to get to retail. Or an, or your place of work, that might be further. So you're more likely to use transit um, back and forth as it relates to getting to your home. Versus um, you know, retail uh, or commercial uses. So that's just a thought on that. And thank you.
Thanks.
Bill Penniman?
Um, yeah, let me follow up with Matt's question about getting a path that runs directly. Uh, between the buildings and the toll road all the way to the Wheelie Metro. Um, I've walked the area. It's not hard. And I would make it a condition. Personally, before anything got approved for this, that you work out a deal with the people between you and the metro to have that path. It would benefit everybody, including them. Um, and, but it's insane to think that these people are gonna walk several, couple, few blocks out to get to the. Uh, Sunrise Valley, then walk along Sunrise Valley, and then walk another couple of blocks back into the metro. You know, it just adds distance and will seriously discourage anybody from using the metro. Though it's not that nobody will, but it'll seriously discourage it. Whereas a simple tree-lined path past the pond. And down to the metro would not be hard to do. Um, so I think that's critical, much more important than going west. Um, on the issue of. Uh, what you do with this space. Any thought of simply converting the built, building that's there into residential? Have you looked at that?
I think that has been looked at along the way, and it's, it's those, that's tough to achieve. Um, i- it ends up being more expensive a lot of times to repurpose that building. Um, and the ability to provide the open space instead of moving the building. Um, and, and providing the ideal layout that works for, you know, a lot of things staff, staff is looking for. As it relates to the vehicular connectivity, the pedestrian connectivity. Um, so I think that, that's a challenging proposition.
Okay, um, so on the subject of open space, the little bit of a sketch that you have, and that's all it is, I understand. But it doesn't look like it has any useful open space. It's a little grassy area. But nothing that would provide actual recreation as opposed to sitting out in the sun. And, and maybe I'm missing something, so I hope that that will develop as to something. I would rather see a taller building. Leaving space open for people to actually use productively, whether it's, you know, courts of some kind, you know. Well, with frisbee, I don't care, but they need to have something that's true recreation. Um, and, and not a little place to sit in the sun.
Yeah.
On the issue of residential versus commercial. It, it would be great, you know, if, if you could get a. Doctor's offices and support group back there. That would be great. Um, but I don't know that the planning, the zoning process can require you to do that. I think it's something that should be explored. Um, but beyond that, I. Given what's there, I don't see anybody putting in a grocery store. Um, that would add more traffic. I don't see even little stores that would be of any, any retail. That would be attractive to people with enough people to support them. Um, so I, I think your choices ultimately are leave the building as is and hope you get tenants. That might be okay. Um. Build residential, um, or fund hospital or some other productive area. I'm not sure who does the most damage to traffic, but whatever you do, you need a path that runs directly to the. Wheelie Metro before you do anything. Um, that's, those are my thoughts at this stage. Um, but I look forward to seeing it as it develops. Oh, oh, there is one question I have here. Um, Heather said, oh, well, we'll, we'll deal with the detailed issues at the zoning stage. But I thought you had said that this isn't, this doesn't involve zoning, uh, or, or you, or a rezoning. Or are you just saying it, it's not rezoning yet? It will.
It's not rezoned. It's not yet. So we have to get through the plan amendment process first, and then they'll apply for their rezonings.
Yeah, so we would, you know, in theory, after the, you know, if the comp plan amendment is, is successful, we would follow up soon thereafter. Rezoning where we would get into those details. A couple, a couple of points on what you were, a couple of things you were asking, if that's okay. Um, the, in terms of filling the space, I will say that, because there's a couple of other comments about that. Um, I've been, I always joke that I've been working on, you know, with the previous property owners, you may remember, of this site. Um, I had just gotten married and I had no children, and I now have a first grader at Armstrong Elementary in Reston. So it's, it's been, it's been a journey. Um, and so they, they have, they have really tried to fill the building. And also bring, done tons of work with brokers to bring other commercial development back here. Um, to, to make it useful and, and have really not had any success for all of the reasons I kind of outlined related to, you know. What's changed around it and the ability to bring people, um, to, to bring people back there. So I do promise that they have, they have, there's been a lot of effort on that. And, and so this is the solution that, you know, we. Solution that, you know, we, we think, um, works the best, um, for kind of, kind of everybody, everybody involved. And on the open space issue, Bill, um, I do, I think it's kind of hard at our conceptual level to show what that space would really be. Um, I see, I see your point when kind of just looking at the block plan, it is a, around a little bit over an acre, um. In terms of square footage and I think. The way we've changed the design of the building from what was originally proposed with the fingers. Of the three kind of fingers does allow us some flexibility. In terms of pulling one of those fingers back and maybe it gets a little bit taller, you know, and this would be at the zoning stage that provides us the opportunity. To kind of tweak the way that space is laid out and what can be there, but the intent is certainly to provide. Real recreation space in that area and not just, you know, some benches that somebody could sit out and, and, and. Uh, something that would really benefit the community.
Okay, well, I would hope that the plan text is absolutely explicit on that and doesn't leave it to. You know, a little area with benches and no, no path to the subway, but thank you.
Tammy, Michelle is next.
Yes, Michelle and then Mike Jennings, Michelle.
Hi, um, you know, in some respects, this is, um. This is somewhat of a, a broader concern where, and I think this is something. That John Carter has spoken to in the past too, where, when. You know, when we have a situation where one building's allowed to go one hundred percent residential. Or, you know, we, we have this mix in mind and then at the end, when we're left with one building, somebody's either left holding the bag, having to. Create all this retail or other, other than residential, or we're now where we are right now. Nothing can go there and then we missed out on our chance to get that actual ideal mix. So in some respects, this is very worrying, um, you know, from just a broad planning perspective. Um, and I don't know, you know, I, and I'm worried that we'll see this in other areas in Reston too. Where that, again, that goal of a mix is just gonna be, you know, something that we, sorry, we can't achieve it after all. And so I don't know, I don't know what we do here, um, because I think that you've heard a lot of things that are correct, that it seems. Very difficult to think of. Businesses that would be able to, to work well with that space. Um, given the rest of the build out. So that's just one broader thought, um, and concern. You know, I think also one thing, I think some, we might be jumping ahead a bit in some of our thoughts and so. Really, when we're looking at what the next step is gonna be and what staff is proposing, it's really just like one paragraph of text, right? And so Amanda, what, what exactly have you proposed as the text that would change? Like how would, can you tell us, can you read it, I, I really think it is just one paragraph, do you mind reading it to us because? That's the step we're in right now, right, is determining that language and what. What we can change with the language that staff will eventually propose.
Yes, so I, I have not, we don't propose specific language, we propose the concept. Of, we want, you know, the recommendation to allow for a hundred percent. Residential with this public recreation component, and so. Staff is working on the paragraph or two that would, that would spell that out, I don't think they're in a position to read that. This evening, but it would come and, and I, you know, at least my understanding is it, it's going to include. You know, reference to some of these things we're talking about, the public recreation space, so that it is public recreation space and that will be in the plan. The pedestrian connectivity and safety, the act, you know, access vehicular access to the west. Some of those things would be spelled out in the proposed language. And Heather and Clara, feel free to chime in on that.
Yeah, I, Michelle, maybe I can let you know what that would look like, right now. Guidance for this area talk, um, describes the possibility of, of a plan, the need for a plan amendment if this wanted to. To develop as anything other than the office, I think is how it's phrased, um, and it has conditions about the need for the park, um. The recreation, uh, recreation facility or recreation component as well as that connection to the west. And so what, what would it look like if, you know, a, a recommendation for. The proposal Amanda's representing, it would be, um, I suspect to keep the current plan as it is to that. Mix and then add an option for this a hundred percent residential on this one parcel, that's, that's what it would look like and it would have conditions. And thank you for bringing up the recommendation, uh, as it is, as it's written now. Right, it's that. It's essentially.
It acknowledges the possibility of this.
Right, and so, and the big change we're seeing right now is we had there the public recreational facility. Right, or we were, we were hoping and we were told at one point that it would be an indoor facility. And that is now off the table.
It was something that the park authority, um, I think didn't, uh. What, and Heather, you can tell me more what their, the park authority's consideration was, but that, you know, a standalone facility wasn't something that was. They thought they could sustain.
There were a couple of different concerns with it, number one, with it being situated at the rear of, of this residential development, that it doesn't have visibility. To the broader community as a public park space, but also. The, the issue of ownership and maintenance was of concern. To, to a, a larger indoor facility at, at the rear of this residential development. They, they indicated that their preference would be for, for a larger activated parks, outdoor park space.
So this is one area where, you know, the park authority is not the only. You know, um, group in, in town to offer, um. Uh, recreation facilities, um, and so this is one area where it's somewhat disappointing that we didn't have more engagement with. The community, because I do think that there are other groups that could have stepped up to run a facility like that. And it's a shame that we're in a position now where the park authority is making a decision. Which really, you know, um, Reston Association, we also have the Reston Community Center, there are others that could have taken on that facility. So I don't know if there's still an avenue there to reconsider that. But I do think that, you know, it would be a shame if it was just the park authority's decision. And not the communities, the community didn't have a chance to have an input there. But I, I, I'm taking it, it's the, the park authority gets to decide here.
Um, well, we're, you know, we're, there's the public, I'm sorry, the urban parks framework. And Reston Parks Guidance, we, we're. We're looking for that public accessibility and so I think that is something that could, could take place. If, you know, as long as it was publicly accessible, I think that would, that could meet that. That, um. Parks need, uh, parks policy, I would say. And I'm, um, the language as written, I think, could carry forward, I mean, I, I think during this stage, we. We wanted to see if it, at the intensity that was being proposed, was it even possible? Was it even possible that they could provide enough usable area for a park space? And once we started to see the, a design that showed possibly that could happen. That's, that's where, um. We, tha- that's where then we started to actually consider the possibility of, of, of an intensity that was somewhere between a, a two and a two point five. But I think that was one of the, the criteria we had in understanding how, how much could fit. How much, and by fit, it fit and still meet other Reston plan goals. Um, I, I do have some comments about the, the ratios, but I think I, I'm expecting some others to comment on that, so I'm gonna. Wait to hear more, that's right, I'm looking at you, Lynn.
I have one additional point on that, uh, Clara. I think that does accurately kind of describe the way the priorities have evolved as it relates to the outdoor. Open space, I think another point that we've heard from the community about Roland Clark, Roland Clark Place and kind of safety and some transportation concerns there. That we would definitely be looking at in the zoning phase, I think that facility would also. You know, residential really is a, is a significant trip reduction from office and that is a benefit. But adding something like that would bring additional trips back there, which is another, just pushback we're receiving. From the community, so that's just another balancing point as, on, on that.
You know, I, I also wanna talk quickly about the walk to the metro. Because, you know, um, I don't know how you would be able to, just given my understanding of, of the way things work. How you would be able to say that we have to have this pedestrian connection before you can build. Right, but without that path, I mean, I just looked, it's over a mile to either metro. So the likelihood that they're using this frequently is, goes down and down and down. So to consider this is really something that is metro accessible, I think is, is pushing it, um, to say the least. I mean, I think that this is an area that is more appropriate for a townhome density. Just given that it's really not, when we look at, you know, I mean. How far do we have to go to get people to really use the metro, over a mile's too far, guys, like that doesn't, that doesn't work. And so I don't know how you would be able to, and can you do that with the plan and with plan language, can you require this connection? It's my understanding you can't, but can it be, I mean, is that what you're considering, because it seems that. Otherwise, it doesn't achieve the goal of limiting trips and then when you also have what sounds like it's going to be. A very small parking requirement or two, this is, this doesn't sound like it's gonna go well at all.
Okay, um.
No, that was a question. And I still had some more.
Okay, we have to, uh, there are other people waiting to talk.
Thanks Tammy, okay.
Is there an, anybody answering?
I mean, I think it's just the, the incremental improvement to the, the trail and bicycle, bicycle network is. Is where the plan can weigh in, so that, that's how the plan recommends improvements to that, that connection.
Yeah, but the problem is we're probably not gonna see that real connection, the, the connection that would. Make this a shorter trip for quite some time.
Right, you're, you're, you're describing an interim condition or, you know, and that interim could be a long time, I got it, yeah.
Now, to the point on the connecting to a road to the west, I thought there were issues with grading and ownership. Are you saying you think those can be overcome, I mean, how likely is this to occur, or is this really just something to? You know, it would be nice, but might not, no, really isn't gonna happen.
Yeah, it's currently a planned condition and the, I think the intention would be to carry that condition forward as well.
And so the, so it has to happen before they can move forward?
You know, uh, a zoning application gets evaluated for general conformance with the plan, um, but that's, yeah.
So it could be a just, but we tried really hard, yeah.
They, they would have to try really hard, yeah, um, and so, but that's a great question, if, if you're raising. Some doubts about the feasibility of it, I think that would be. Yeah, important for us to investigate if, because I, I think that hadn't come up before.
Yeah, there is already, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, there is already on an existing proffered condition about that connection to the west, it is subject to coordination with that adjacent property owner. But I will say there is already an existing easement, ingress egress easement. For the, connecting the two, obviously that connection doesn't exist. We would likely have to expand the language of that easement, but we're not starting from a place of zero. In terms of making that connection and coordinating with that adjacent property owner.
Okay, one more question, um, schools, um, would this be in the Sunrise Valley, Langston Hughes? South Lakes? Okay, um, and so when you say the schools are fine. That is including everything else that you're studying too? Or just this alone right now at this moment?
Um, so that's a condition just for this site, um, the schools initiated a comprehensive. Review of all the plan amendments that were submitted with the twenty twenty-three SSPAs. Or twenty twenty-two SSPAs. That. Will need to be updated with the addition of, of the new SSPAs that were adopted this year. But the, the condition that schools is, is sufficient is, is specific to this development.
Specific, okay, and when would the schools be done considering the additional SSPAs as well? In the comprehensive look that you said they're doing.
So it's, it's based on, uh, when we staff, um, plan amendments and. And when we initiate those requests for impact analysis, um, I'm not sure if Clara, if you can speak more to that.
I think, I think that's right, I think when we requested that analysis. Some of the. Plan amendments we're being asked to consider hadn't been added to the work program yet. And so we don't have an analysis of all of the things that are on the work program. Um, those are so, um. Preliminary, those could change, those. But I think schools would provide that with the, the next one that, that comes up when. So, so I think Heather has the, yeah, yeah.
I guess, you know, I think that's a, um, I think we could do a better job there because there's a lot that's supposed to come in between this property. And Sunrise Valley Elementary and then a lot that will be feeding into Langston Hughes and South Lakes. And I think that we would all benefit, um, as a community, um, from a, a more comprehensive look, you know, sooner. My other question, and my last one here is, um, the, it's my understanding the, um, the Board of Supervisors. Has on the work plan, right, and, uh. A study of certain parcels within the TSA. Was this one of the ones that was included in that study? Or is this outside of the study, because there was a Reston TSA study that was approved to be added to the work plan?
Okay, let me see if I, I, I can get this and then Heather, maybe you can help me out, um. There, there are a number of site-specific proposals. And in recognition that we can't take them all one at a time, that a lot of them are in clusters. In similar areas where you need to look at them more comprehensively, this, the TS. All of the, how many nominations are there, like twenty, I don't know, Heather?
Something like that, yeah.
Those are all kind of listed under the TSAs and so there's, there's flexibility to determine what the scope is. So that we don't miss the opportunity to do a more comprehensive look at. At the areas in between these nominations. Um, so yes, the, the answer is yes, this is one of the. Nominations and the Reston TSAs that are listed under that line item on the work program.
And to expand on, on the answer to the question, this plan amendment looks at this site. We take into consideration the surrounding area and surrounding uses and, um, developments, but. But there are no other plan amendments situated between this and, and another proposal that would warrant us. Fully encapsulating those additional sites in the same way that we would with something like Association Drive or, or Commerce Metro.
Okay, and then with those other. With those other, um, ones that could be grouped, are you saying that you would also consider? Parcels that are not part of an SSPA? As you're looking at the plan language, or are you limiting it just to those parcels covered under an SSPA?
No decision has been made on, on tho- on any, um, area that's grouped like that about what would be proposed to cha- be proposed for change. I think it's too early, but we have the flexibility to, to consider those areas, to think about what if they came in, in the future. And wanted a similar change, I think it's important to be able to ask those questions and, and not just limit it to. Those that submitted a nomination.
So it could in a sense be opening up the entire TSA?
Um, it wouldn't because we're focused on. Addressing the nominations, we have, we have to evaluate those nominations, I.
But the nominations cover most of the TSA, right?
For Wheelie, for Wheelie, yeah, I just, it's not all of the TSAs where this is happening, it's really the Wheelie Station where a lot of the. I think a lot of the consideration will be happening in, in the coming, uh, months and year, years.
And last thing is a request, um, can you send us please the calendar? That, as far as what you have for the SSPAs. Can you, can you share that with us, cause I don't think that that is made public, if I'm, if, or maybe it is and I don't know how to find it.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's a, that's a great request, I think really we, we just have. Yeah, um, yeah, that's a, that's a great request. I think really we, we just have this one scheduled for, it really, it's just this one for now, and we're getting started on some other ones that, there may be some others. I, I mean, I think what I foresee is that we really should come talk to this group. I, I was like, do I say this now? We really do need to talk to you about the whole work program. And, and it could be that you've already been briefed and went to the screenings, but I think maybe it's time to have a discussion about the order in which we, um, anticipate evaluating the work program. I think that would be good, a good discussion with this group.
I think that would be well received. Thank you.
Okay, Mike Jennings, you're next.
Thanks, Tammy. Um, I also was on the, uh, the redo of the, uh, Reston master plan with Tammy and Lynn and Bill and lots of others. And, um, you know, so it, like any plan, I think things like this that come up are worthy of evaluating, uh, any plan is not edged in stone, so. Um, I think that this, we should take, I'm okay with taking this the next step. We're not approving, you know, a design or anything. All we're saying is, hey, maybe this, this, this area should be given a chance to be considered something else. And having been a business owner in Reston for twenty-some years, um, before I sold the business and leasing space, uh, for most of those years on Sunrise Valley. I mean, a building like Roland Clark, I think I maybe even looked at space there once. I mean, it's a crap building way back off of Sunrise Valley. And I can tell you buildings on Sunrise Valley, like where my last office was, they're half-empty. I mean, people, office space is not what people want. And you talk about retail, we'll just go a little bit west to what we used to call the International Building and those, uh, first floor, uh, retail spaces like Gold's Gym and the Kebab Place. Well, those aren't even full yet, so. And those are right there where people can see them, so. I think to hold out hope that some, you know, small retail place is gonna go way back there in, in the back of, uh, along Toll Road is, is a pipe dream, but I think we ought to give these guys a chance, have the SSPA move forward. And then as they develop concrete plans, then let's ask all these questions about roads and stuff. Um, it's just too early to, to be overly concerned, I think, about the exact details. All we're doing is saying, hey, if, if you can't make it work, and, you know, none of us are commercial brokers or building owners and know how hard it really is to do this. So let's see what they can do, um, given the options, uh, beyond what's already in the plan. So that's, that's my two cents and all I have. Thanks, Tammy.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, who's next? Bill, Lynn, or Matt?
I think those guys forgot to put their hands down.
Yeah, I, I apologize, uh, my, I meant to take my hand down.
My, my hand is up and, uh, so Bill Peniman, uh, is showing his number one.
Bill, do you have another comment?
And then I'm two.
Bill Peniman? Okay, his mic is turned on. Lynn, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, um, I just had two more comments, um, just so that Amanda and county staff understand what we have, um, you know, Reston Planning and Zoning has considered in the past and what the community, um, you know, has been sold in the past. Um, I would invite you to review what we were sold, uh, versus what was delivered at Tall Oaks Village Center in terms of recreational space. Um, this is off of North Shore Drive, east of Wheelie Avenue. And we were sold a beautiful, green, lush recreational space, and I invite you to go over there and look to see what has been, uh, delivered to the community there. Um, in terms of affordable housing, um, again, you know, we're sold on the term of affordable housing, but what is actually delivered is workforce housing. And that only applies to, and it's only built to community, the county standards. And the rest of it is all market rate. And this is, does not address the need for affordable housing in the community. So, um, I, I just want to make sure that you all understand that, that this is something that we are looking at, and I specifically am questioning how much affordable housing, and this is sixty percent AMI and below, uh, is being incorporated into any new residential development. Um, as you know, Reston is a model for providing all types of levels of housing in terms of market rate, workforce, and affordable within a single development. Um, you, you will be hard-pressed to find um, affordable housing, concentrated development in Reston. Um, that's not how we do things here, so thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, Bill, are you, Bill doesn't have his hand up. Okay, um, thank, is there anyone else who has a comment? Okay, I would like to finish up by thanking and building off of a comment that Bill Peniman did make about to Amanda. Consider reducing the footprint of this building and enlarging the open slash, open space slash recreational. You still need to give us twenty-five percent or fifty percent non-residential on this site to come up with the seventy-five fifty, I mean, seventy-five twenty-five. We were promised the, when we approved, or the white building, point building was approved, we were promised that the lack of open space and lack of residential, I mean, recreation for that, would be made up on this space. The two projects in front of it were new also. And we approve that with that expectation that there would be recreational space in this nineteen fifty parcel. So, um, to think that the county should go ahead and switch that over or rewrite it to a hundred percent residential just really shocks me. The other thing, so if you reduce the footprint and go tall, not liking it better, because that's a lot of DUs back there. But, um, I think Lynn's point about the ADUs is well-taken as well. But I'm really concerned about the density in this area where you're already having community complaints about over-parking and crowding. I know at the, at one point, residences, residents from the new townhouses, and perhaps the point, were walking across the street uh, through the golf course or upper road into where Katie McLean's cluster is, and using private cluster, uh, rec center, rec facilities, including a basketball court, and saying, no, this is public, and it is not public, it's absolutely private property. So there's definitely, there's no parks, there's no walkable anything in this area. So I'm sorry that this, you know, investor bought this property thinking he could cash in and put a ton of DUs there and not fulfill a public recreational requirement. Where also are the dogs going? Literally going. Um, five hun, three hundred and fifty DUs means you're gonna have three hundred and fifty dogs. Um, I just, I really have a problem with the density on this plot and no substantial open space recreational. These little finger ideas, no. That's not, then you have people outside, uh, dwelling units making noise. That's not good for the residents in the dwelling units. So, I don't know, I'm just really concerned and I look forward. Amanda, you have your hands full, and, um, I'm, you know, I know that you've been working on this for a while, if you have a child pet in, in, in first grade. So thank you so much for your presentation. And, uh, we look forward to talking from you, Amanda, and the staff to see where we go from here. But before we leave, uh, Commissioner Carter, do you have any comments?
Uh, I, I did have one. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm thinking back a little bit, there, there was a list up there of, um, potential items in the, in the, uh, SSPA for the com, the actual comp plan. I, I would add something. You know, we have a lot of people there, particularly in the townhouses, that are very close to this. Maybe something a little better about, uh, harmony or compatibility to those townhouses. Uh, something in the comp plan about that. I think that would help. Uh, the other thing is, I, you know, I li, I like to look at the drawings. It, it looks out of scale with the uh, adjacent, so that, I don't know if there's something wrong with the drawing, but it seems, it seems kind of odd when you put the two together. It's, it's roughly the same size, but except it looks quite a lot bigger for some reason. So anyway, something about compatibility, uh, height setbacks, s, something that should be in the plan that, that we could address. Uh, and yeah, there is open space. Uh, the community also talked quite a lot about the transportation. I, seemed like there wasn't much in the comp plan or one of those items. It, what's the level of service of that intersection there at Roland Clark and Sunrise Valley? Is it, is it passing? I, I don't know.
I, I can speak to the.
Should perhaps look into that.
I will just say that that, that si, there was a proffered signal there, um, for the apartment building, and so that was studied and it was not warranted, a signal at that intersection, um, at that point in time. Time has passed, and so we would certainly be doing that again, um, at the zoning phase.
And then I, I've forgotten, I guess I should remember, but I've forgotten, what is the existing zoning and what would be the proposed zoning?
We don't a hundred percent know the answer to that yet in terms of the proposed, um, zoning, but the, it's currently zoned PRC.
That's what I thought. So there would be some issue with the caps here, but if we get rid of, uh, a little bit in the denominator, we'd want to have that question answered. Nobody wants to talk about that, but I, I'm afraid it's, it's on the table when we start getting rid of existing PRC zoning. Uh, let's see. So that, that's what I have. Is, is there something that can be done in terms of this non-residential?
So.
I'm not thinking office, I'm not thinking of retail. I am thinking recreation-wise, meeting space, uh, something that would be useful to the whole neighborhood there.
So again, I think that the conversation has evolved such that, and I, I will say, like, from a, just the size of this parcel, like, it's not physically possible to put like a building and fifty percent, somebody said fifty percent at one point, of the, of the non-residential on the, it's, it's, it's a function of looking at this on a site-by-site basis or an overall basis. And I do think that the, the planning staff is now more so looking at this on an overall basis, because that's the way, not completely all over Reston, but over the, this portion of the residential mixed-use area. Um, because that's the way to look at this and actually achieve the overall kind of balance that you want. Um, you know, instituting a twenty, seventy-five twenty-five on each individual site is, is just not ultimately achievable, um, and, and doesn't actually create the overall, um, uh, balance, balance that you want. I mean, we, the, the intent here and the, and the space that we're providing is certainly meant to achieve the urban parks framework, um, and, and provide, you know, meaningful recreational space that, that is needed in this area. And I don't think it's necessarily, you know, the other, the other developments were approved, and now we're in a situation, and we, we, by doing this, we would provide a meaningful space that is not there and is not gonna be there otherwise. Um, so we hope that that's seen as a benefit. And I think Clara maybe had something she was gonna say about the overall mixed uses at one point, but maybe not.
Right, you said something before, so, so maybe, maybe don't need to do that again. You, you, you said it before, unless, unless you're dying to say it again.
Nope, she's good. I just wanted to make sure she didn't have anything to add to that.
The last thing was that open space issue. Th, this is a combined parcel with, with the adjacent, so I, I guess we need kind of the facts and figures. Is this making up for the open space that's lacking on the previously approved project? So what, what's the total open space for the area, this site plus the adjacent?
Yeah.
As part of that original.
Yeah, and the expectation is that they need to provide for any new need, park need, in addition to the commitment they have to the existing multifamily building. That is the expectation.
Yes, that, that's, that's put well. And then for Amanda, wow, Amanda, you, you worked hard on this site. I wish there was a, a clear-cut solution, but.
We're getting there.
Yes, with your, uh, work on it, if there is one, we'll find one.
Yeah, and I think at this point, right, like, kind of coming back to the beginning here, is that we're just, we're talking about at this stage, and I think Mike Jennings, you know, said it, that like, is this a good idea to consider multifamily and meaningful public recre, recreation space for this community in this location? And then we, all of these detailed questions, we will have plenty of time and opportunity to discuss at length, you know, at, in, in step two. Um, so that's just kind of my final thought. Thank you, John.
It would be the start of an idea if you address that compatibility issue. The traffic on, not, not so much the traffic, I guess it's the safety of Roland Clark. Uh, and how you pull this neighborhood together. Remember, there's, this is the last parcel, but there's, there's a lot of existing people there that have their own expectations. We probably ought to be
Certainly.
treating them well and all this. Anyway. And that, that scale problem, look at that scale. I don't know, that drawing, it looks.
I think that's just something with the image, because it is the same height, like, it is, i, in terms of the, 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 the height of the building and the number of units and the square footage, it is comparable. I think it's probably just something with the scale of that, that, that three-D image, so we can, we can kind of look back at that and see if we can get that to be a little more accurate.
To me, it's the footprint that looks out of scale.
Oh, and in the context of, probably because we just overlaid it on Google Earth, and so those don't have perfect scale match. Uh, but we can look at creating something that, um, is a little more accurate.
Okay, well, that's enough for me.
Okay, I see, David, and now you have your hand up.
But this is Sue.
Sue, great.
I, I agree with the committee's concern, uh, about the lack of, of recreational space, and I'm wondering about, uh, if you could keep all of the open space that you now have designated, but also look into the feasibility of a garage rooftop, athletic field, courts, or track. Um, might, might be a solution, might not be a solution, but, um, certainly, uh, a rooftop can provide, um, uh, fields, courts, track, dog, dog park, other, other recreational uses. That's all.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Sue. That's, I'm so glad you spoke up. Anyone else before we leave Roland Clark? All right, Amanda and, and, uh, county staff, thank you so much for coming before us and helping us, uh, get our arms around this. We look forward to the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. We'll find some more time to, to come see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Mark, is Supervisor Elcorn still here, or is he gone?
Um, the supervisor did drop off.
Okay. Not, not to worry. Um, at some point, um, maybe a group of us can meet with him or he can come back. I think there are some changes in the community coming forward. I don't want ever to sandbag him with issues that are not, um, identified in, in advance. So anything we would bring up, um, certainly, you know, it's not. you know, it's not for him to be answering on the fly, just to get um his impressions of the change in the PRC policy plan. And then um, some other suggested changes in the policy plan, not for the PS uh uh planned residential community. But if it's happening in the county, it's going to affect the density. And we certainly want to look at the rest of the county in relation to how it affects Reston going forward. So I certainly appreciate that, and please thank him for uh bringing, you know, coming tonight and helping us. Thank you. Um, okay, a committee, any um administrative issues or new business? Okay, I don't.
Are we meeting at seven o'clock, our next meeting, or six thirty, or what time?
Well, that, that's the issue. I'm gonna leave that up to John Capella. And for sure, we agreed at the last regular meeting. Um, first of all, I want to say that having extra meetings uh precludes some people from participating because they have Monday night service commitments that they have already made that are on the nights of their other uh commit, you know, uh responsibilities. But um, we are going to absolutely, as a committee, discuss starting times. So I think John was under, or hoping that we would switch John Capella to six thirty permanently. I don't think that works for a lot of people, but we'll have to vote on it. And hopefully, we'll have all eighteen of us at that meeting so that everyone can put in a vote. Um, that's one thing I'm aware of. So.
And I'm still working on incorporating Jared's changes to our opening commentary.
Yes, that would be the second thing I think we'll do on a regular meeting when people are are scheduled to be, when, regular, it's a regular meeting when our members are, hopefully, we'll be able to be, all be here. And Jared and everybody else who vote, who worked on that, super, super thank you for doing so. Okay, uh, if there's no other business.
I move, we adjourn.
It's Katie, I'll second it.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Appreciate you and have a good evening and we'll see you in October.
Thank you for leading us tonight, Tam.
Thanks, everybody.
Tammy.
Thanks. Bye-bye, y'all.